Good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:30. Welcome to this special called meeting of the Danville City Commission. This is our annual budget presentation. And let me make one personal comment to staff. Thank you for a tremendous job on what is always a very difficult task. Any of my fellow commissioners have any comments before we turn the microphone over to Mr. Scott? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, I do want to rather concisely attempt to summarize the budget recommendations for the city of Danville for the next fiscal year. In doing so, I want to weave into that set of recommendations for the next fiscal year a little bit of planning effort for what may be on the horizon the following fiscal year. So this includes specific recommendations that are for the next year and probable decisions yet to be made by future City Commission in the following fiscal year. This work to produce this preliminary budget has taken a lot of work, and I appreciate all the efforts of the City Commission earlier in our retreat to give thought to our current and future needs and how we might begin the process most effectively addressing those needs. I think we recognize that Danville is a unique city in Kentucky. It's a city of firsts. We're doing a lot of things in creative ways, and we are changing. And I think this budget attempts to recognize the fact that we do have change underway and need to make appropriation and financial support for a number of items to better position ourselves to be a city of service to our citizens in the future. So with that brief preamble, in your package tonight are both the written memo of the transmittal letter that I've attempted to summarize these items for your consideration, followed by the detailed preliminary budget proposal that shows each department and each line item funding appropriation recommended, and then our tenure capital list for the next year and assuming nine following years. So I would hope that I would be able, although you may have questions that you really wish to ask during this initial presentation, I would ask that you hold those as we go through just to make sure that maybe you won't have to ask the question after I go through the initial presentation. I'm going to try to get through this as expeditiously as possible for our audience at home and in the audience of translators. There's a lot of numbers here, and I know that's difficult to convey, and so I may not go into each and every one of those, but rather try to do the raw numbers so that we don't get too bogged down into minutia in talking about the recommended budget for the year ahead.
Ron, you may need to pull that microphone real close to you.
I will, and maybe I'd like to say that following tonight's presentation, I would also encourage each commissioner, as you think about this budget, and you haven't seen this either, no one has seen it as we just completed it, staff about five minutes prior to this meeting. So I would encourage you to consider it and to schedule meetings in the following weeks with me at your earliest convenience. So if you have questions or suggestions that we can talk about what may be on your mind as you review this recommended budget. Our timeline, of course, for the audience and for our own collective memory, is that we must adopt a new budget prior to July 1. We essentially have between now and then to do so. Typically, we've been successful in coming to terms with that before the end of May, and I would hope we'd be able to do so this year and have June as the month of adoption of our regular and two readings in June. The basic overview of the recommended budget starts kind of in a little bit non-traditional way. Rather than getting into numbers immediately, I just want to talk about the fact that the reality of delivery of services for most organizations, and the city is no different, that personnel costs are a large component of any budget for delivering services. They're normally the major component in any operating budget. And so I'll begin with that point of view. All current services the city provides are recommended to be continued in the next fiscal year, with those services continuing to be provided by our existing staff. There is an exception or two regarding that statement regarding some new services proposed. But we also have, as is currently the case in the administrative portion of the proposed budget, some funding authorized for contracting for professional services. But we're proposing a continuation budget with no new personnel being added, except as I'll note in just a minute. We do have current shortfalls in funding, sharing of funding from the state Commonwealth of Kentucky in a number of areas, including our municipal road aid funding. Those have been decreasing for a number of years. And in the recommended budget for next year, I am recommending that we increase allocations to street paving by appropriating additional $100,000 to enable us to do sufficient spring and fall street paving so that we don't fall further and further behind as a result of lack of state funding. A year or two ago, we began the process of trying to improve sidewalks. That was widely enthusiastically received, I think, by our citizens, and I am recommending that $60,000 more is allocated to continue to make sidewalk improvements in our community, which will be for sidewalks, $125,000 appropriated in the next fiscal year. We spent a great deal of time over the past year talking about the need for code enforcement and how to deal with structures that have gone well past the point of saving. We have come out of the budget, we've spent out of the existing fiscal year's budget quite a few funds to demolish hazardous structures and to continue that cleanup effort. I am recommending $95,000 to be spent for that purpose in the year ahead, to demolish those unsafe structures. And we've had discussions also about our Second Street Bridge, which needs replacement because our fire truck exceeds the weight limit currently over that. And for safety reasons and to avoid driving the long way around to respond to a fire in that section, it needs to be replaced, and that's recommended at the cost of $200,000 for the fiscal year ahead. So those new services I've just mentioned total $445,000 in new revenue needs. I mentioned the fact that we would be recommending enhanced services in a couple of areas. Those are actually in just two areas. And the total new personnel that would be employed would be limited to five people. Four of those would be emergency dispatch personnel to provide the emergency medical dispatch service that our hospital has requested in order to save, provide greater assurance that people who call in distress can receive detailed medical dispatch information until help arrives. To do that, as we've talked about previously, we'll require the addition and training certification of four additional persons at our 911 center. I will say that as we have started these discussions to implement enhanced emergency medical dispatch services, the city of Danville and Boyle County have met and are currently working together to develop and implement an interlocal agreement to address both funding issues and service issues of our 911 center in total, including the proposed emergency medical dispatch services. Key to our provision of enhanced services in the 911 area for emergency medical dispatch will be the actual signing of an interlocal agreement with the county regarding operational and funding issues. And not only the signing of the agreement, but also obtaining additional funding. I believe it's true that both Danville and Boyle County each and both face significant funding challenges. Notwithstanding that condition, I do have a concern presently that Boyle County in its current budget for the next fiscal year may reduce the current level of funding that we are receiving from Boyle County at the present time. And we have made points in prior years that we believe that's not fairly funded, if I can use that term, at the present time. So a reduction causes concern in the existing level, and we believe that will be reduced $45,000, or maybe reduced, at least that's the current discussion. And we may not receive any additional funds to step up to provide the enhanced emergency medical dispatch. So I'm stating this as a matter of concern and the fact that we will need to find additional revenues to intercept and to sustain those additional services. That amount for the first year, given the cutback of $45,000 in additional staffing and equipment and training, is higher than what's previously discussed. We earlier said it was about $300,000, $253,000. It's really in our budget projections, given the cutback, $345,000. The second area of improved service is with regard to our certified local government agreement with the Kentucky Heritage Council. We, for a number of years, have signed that agreement, saying that we will do such and such under the terms of the agreement to promote historic preservation, to nominate properties to historic register, and do other things to promote the preservation efforts and in so doing, being as a certified local government, be eligible also for future federal and state grants. Part of that requirement is that we hire appropriately qualified employees to provide that service. We are behind schedule in doing that, and that was fulfilled in prior years due to the exceptional qualifications in that specific area of background training of Bethany Rogers. So to meet the terms of the agreement, we need to hire qualified staff that will work with the Heart of Danville Executive Director and their promotion of business interest in downtown, but we have to fulfill the other side of that ledger in terms of promoting historic preservation, aiding our Architectural Heritage Commission in all they do in providing some additional services there. And so that's included as a recommendation for the next year, and that expected cost for personnel benefits, equipment, and so forth is $80,000. The third general comment about city employees is that we are recommending that the city employees do receive, all full-time and all part-time, a 1% cost of living increase, and also authorize merit increases of up to 2% for all full-time employees, other than the city manager, who is evaluated annually by the City Commission. We're recommending the continuation of our full-time family medical coverage as a key component to retaining qualified and good employees and to attract new ones. And I'm pleased to say that our contract for doing so beginning July 1 with our current carrier was renegotiated at a 1% lesser cost than the premium cost that expires June 30 of this year. So I think that's good news. No other employee benefit changes are proposed. The cost I've identified so far in next year's general fund budget, $880,000, new cost. Funding of joint agencies, funding to support implementation of Strategic Economic Development Plan. As you know, our city and county and community organizations retained RKG, Inc., a nationally-recognized firm, to conduct a study and recommend a strategic economic development plan to guide our community's economic development efforts for the next five to seven years. We've had a lot of community discussion about that effort underway. We've received the primary features of that plan. They're in the process of putting it all together with appendees and a detailed work plan, and that will be delivered to our working group mid to late May of 2017. We know the essentials of the forthcoming report. And when the city receives the final report, legally, we will be accepting that report as we would any other auditor service or contract. And the acceptance notes that they have completed their obligation to conduct the study. The acceptance does not mean that we agree with all or part of what is contained in the report. The city and other partners of the EDP will need to determine what RKG recommendations to agree to implement in whole or in part, the level of funding to be provided by all parties necessary to achieve implementation of the agreed upon recommendations, and work steps and timeline for implementation. So clearly, you know, as we have come together and looked at how we can do things better, we have a lot of work ahead of us to fully consider those final reports and how to best implement them. It's clear that we've got a lot of work ahead of us to do. In view of the reality and the necessity to grow our local economy, to provide high-paying jobs, and to generate revenue sufficient to meet current and future needs, it is recommended in the next fiscal year that the city approve funding a large portion of the requested EDP expansion budget, as was previously submitted by the EDP, which does incorporate the initial recommendations of RKG with regard to structure and staffing. Acting in this proactive manner to fund a large portion of the EDP expansion budget would appear to be the most rational approach for the city to take in supporting the effective implementation of the first steps to begin implementing the plan and achieving the goals of that plan. As is presently the case, it is recommended, if this budget is approved, that funding be distributed quarterly under the premise that the recommendations of the strategic plan as accepted by the city and subsequently agreed to by the city and other partners regarding organizational structure, joint funding, and work plans will be implemented in a timely way. So what I'm really suggesting to you in plain language is that we need, in my opinion, to fund a large portion of that beginning budget. We need to plan to allocate it, but we need to have the expectation that those agreements on what we're going to be doing under the new plan are reached fairly expeditiously so that we are not simply funding the same things that we have been funding in the past, but are funding in a more focused way. I recommend the city approve funding a large portion, but not all, of the requested EDP expansion budget in recognition that our approach is meant to have partnership in this community whereby the city, county, industrial foundation, our private sector investors jointly fund our community economic development partnership efforts. Each partner should contribute a fair share of the total cost of this effort. The funding levels of each partner are not specified in the RKG report. Instead, the ED has taken the approach that they will do as much work as possible within the funding provided. Accordingly, attached budget reflects the recommendation to fund the EDP or the Danville Boyle County Community Development Corporation, if that becomes its new name, for the next fiscal year as follows. Continued funding in this year's budget of $145,000 from the city with the intent that our step of $20,000 in the existing fiscal year continue to be utilized to fund targeted marketing efforts as identified in the RKG report. They identified three primary opportunities of business sectors, and so we think that step up in funding we made in the current fiscal year should be continued and devoted to those marketing efforts. New funding should be provided in the amount of $90,000 to the EDP with the intent being that it be used to hire additional staff and provide staff development cost, and also be used to market Danville through placement of advertisements made in conjunction with those efforts of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. We should work together more closely to try to achieve the common goal of having industry that the state is pursuing locate in Danville. So those are the two major functions that I see would be what is essential to begin with, additional staff and targeted efforts and closer alignment of advertising. There are many other good projects in that budget, but those additional services to be provided, in my view, will need to be met through the additional funding that other partners can and should provide. And I'll say, we have a lot of work to do. We must work diligently to become more successful in both attracting and retaining businesses and growing revenue in the year ahead. It is hoped that by our example, other public and private entities will contribute fairly and fully to meet the requested EDP expansion budget. However, as I'm going to be saying several times during this presentation, additional revenue is needed for the city to also meet this need. The total cumulative revenue needs identified thus far in the proposed budget, total $970,000, if you've been keeping track. And those do not count revenue needed to pay debt service on a $10 million bond issue that is contemplated for the fall of 2017 that will be expended for $9 million for energy improvement efforts, as we've completed almost a two-year effort to find those and to quantify the savings that will be returned and guaranteed under that effort, as well as out of that first $10 million in the fall of this year, approximately $1 million of it will be devoted towards making water improvements to provide greater supply of water to our industrial foundation in order that our existing and future industries will stay and locate there, as well as providing enhanced water service lines and reserve capacity to the city of Paraville. So that's $970,000 in new revenue needs to do those things, again, not counting the repayment cost of the bond issue. Funding of city and county agencies. This has always been a controversial or somewhat controversial decision in our community. In your budget on page 12 are the recommended allocation to these agencies. I've mentioned, in addition to fully funding the EDP, in my mind, fully funding is contributing half, 50% of the requested amount from the city, but to me is fully funding. It's recommended that the Danville Boyle County Airport be funded at 100% of their requested amount, $25,000, also due to the significance and importance of the airport or local economic development efforts. The small caveat to that is that they're building a large hangar out there. They've gotten private and grants to do that, which is going to expand our ability to have activity out there, which is all great. The city, for a number of years, has provided property insurance to the airport in addition to our contribution, and somewhere along the way, the county stepped back from paying half of that property cost. And so my recommendation is to fund the airport at their requested amount of $25,000. If the county will not pay one-half of the insurance cost of the property, insurance for the airport, that their share of that cost be deducted from the $25,000. Planning its owning is recommended at the full funding they requested in the amount of $75,000, but we also included half of their indicated amount if they were to go to a five-day work week, $12,500. So to do that is also additional revenue of $12,500. Parks and Recreation, it recommended be funded next year in the amount of $238,000, plus the city is providing them with additional equipment, a used truck, and planning to make increased capital expenditures for parking lot paving out there next year in the amount of $25,000. I think we're familiar with the past year. The Ad Hoc Committee has been very active and funded additional capital improvements in Millennium Park above our budget in the current year, and we continue to provide substantial in-kind services in terms of public works to Parks and Recreation on an ongoing basis, as well as other services. Just counting the full details of their budget is also in the detailed budget, but I'm indicating $25,000 in new revenue is required to step up and do that additional The other thing that I think all commissioners are well aware of, and perhaps the community is as well, is that our Bunny Davis Pool has exceeded its useful life. We're on a year-by-year kind of extension out there, and a number of years ago, the city began in recognition that we're going to have to either put a pool liner or begin to save money to have a capital, a new pool built of some size. We've set aside $30,000 each year for that purpose. The new budget now shows that we've got a total of $120,000 reserved for pool improvement. So I think we're conservative in terms of setting aside money for a future community need. You know, I will say, our renewed focus on Parks and Recreation is to serve our existing city and county residents, to attract new residents, to improve our community's health, and in recognition that healthy workers and a good Parks and Recreation system are important elements in our overall economic development efforts. And to that end, I applaud the City Commission for going ahead and contracting with a consultant to provide a master park facilities planning study. This was at the city's initiative. The county, again, decided they didn't want to participate in that effort to look ahead at our future needs, so I commend you for doing that. Community agencies. For many years, the city has granted funding to community agencies. We have quite a variety in our community, in recognition that our community agencies significantly contribute in a number of ways to the quality of life of our residents. Given our financial difficulties, generally speaking, it is recommended that community agencies be funded to a lower level next year. Specific amounts recommended for community agencies are listed on page 12 of the budget. While funding for almost all agencies are reduced in this recommended budget for the next year, reductions in funding are not recommended for two agencies, those being family services and senior citizens. These two agencies provide essential, basic assistance to our poor and elderly, and no recommendations in their funding is recommended. No reductions are recommended for family services and senior citizens. A minor reduction is recommended for the Great American Brass Band Festival, but it is recommended for funding at the $30,000 level in view of the fact that the Great American Brass Band Festival provides a very beneficial local economic impact to our community of $3.4 million for those few days that those events occur. That's quite a return for the investment, in my opinion. It is also recommended that this year, new funding be provided to two new community agencies, the first one being Grace Cafe. And again, this year, reviewing the application of Grace Cafe, the conclusion reached was that this year it met the test of public purpose expenditures that would permit the City Commission to provide a grant. However, as it is difficult to distinguish the relative merits of funding New Hope Food Pantry, which we funded for a number of years, versus Grace Cafe, each are proposed to be funded at the same level next year, $7,200 each, which is an $800 reduction in the funding provided to New Hope Food Pantry last year. The second new agency recommended to be funded this year fulfills your earlier commitment when you had presentations back last fall from Bluegrass Community and Technical College of the Danville campus, who was seeking $50,000 from the city and attempting to raise funding from other public and private sources, not only in Danville but Boyle County and neighboring communities, to seek to obtain a state grant to enable them to expand their facility and provide greater capacity for workforce development training. That $750,000 grant was received. It was a little less than we first anticipated, but it is recommended that we allocate $50,000 grant to be Bluegrass Technical and Community College as workforce training is vital to our local economic development efforts. The total cumulative new revenue needs I've identified thus far in next year's budget by adding Parks and Recreation, Planning Its Owning, Grass Cafe, and the Bluegrass College Technical, Community Technical College, we're now at a level of $1,64,070, not counting additional revenue needs to pay the $10 million bond issue planned for the fall. When consideration is given to the fact that the city will also need to find additional revenues of $484,250 to match our two street scape projects on Main Street, one has been approved, one is pending, but we believe the opportunity is great that we will be finally approved. The total cumulative revenue needs, new revenue needs for the city, and I'm not counting small things either, the total cumulative new revenue needs for the city for only these previously identified projects is $1,541,750. The recommended approach in addressing our revenue needs will be addressed in just a minute, but I'll minute, but I also want to mention our, in greater detail, our review of our capital improvement projects planned for the next year, or possibly two. In the next fiscal year, the City Commission has undertaken a number of very important planning steps to determine how to best, and most economically, meet a variety of our city's key future needs. These steps include, and they're not totally inclusive here, they include contracting for the Master Parks and Recreation Study, which is now underway, the initiation of a wayfinding study for our city in downtown, which has been kind of on the back burner for a couple of years now, and conducting a design study to determine the design and size and right sizing of our number-one fire station on Main Street that has been put off for year and year after year after year. I think we all know in our community that that fire station is braced in the back now, so it won't collapse, and they can't drive through the building, and so it's at the point it needs to be studied in terms of what it will, a new design will be, either a complete retrofit or an expansion of that one, or perhaps a construction of a new building. That study is underway with Brevura, we went through that process earlier this spring, and those are some of the factors when we recognize that significant additional revenue will require, be required in the next fiscal year to implement the recommendations of the fire station study, or any that may come out of street scape, or any that may come out of the study of our future Parks and Recreation needs. You know, it's difficult and probably premature to really say what those future costs could be collectively, but you pay me to sort of give you an estimate of that, and I would say a conservative estimate of those future costs are at least $15 million and probably more, in complete candor. And I'm talking about if we actually build the fire station in addition to the little bit of funds we've set aside to begin that work this year, it will be probably five million or more additional for the fire station. It will probably be, and we've talked for many years about the need for a new swimming facility and perhaps an expanded recreational study or facility as part of that. I don't know what the final design may be from that Parks and Recreation Study, and it's, again, premature to say, but I would be surprised if the cost projected, whatever the design may be, is a cost less than $10 million, and it could go up from there. So, I mean, I think you can conclude very quickly that $15 million is not an unreasonable amount to conclude that our future capital needs will total based upon just these two or three studies now underway. You know, in 2012, the city did issue bonds, and we refinanced a lot of our existing costs at that time, we issued a new bond to obtain the public works facility building, we at that time underwent a rigorous examination by the rating agencies and improved our bond rating to that of a AA-, which is a very esteemed rate for a community of our size. That excellent bond rating was based upon the city's financial condition, stability, basically ability to pay debt, as well as the qualifications and stability of the financial and general managers operating the city. So, it's important for us to note that the bond rating agency, before we issue any future bond, including the one planned for this year '17 and then potential ones for 2018, every time they do that, they're going to be looking again at our revenue streams, our reserves, our financial stability, and our management and financial policies, as they reevaluate each time, are we a good risk or a bad risk for the potential purchase of those bonds? We think we're a good risk, and we think we will get to maintain our current excellent AA- rating, but that may be contingent upon having the additional revenue identified and available, that's contained later in this report. I won't read this in great detail because you're familiar with our $10 million bond issue planned for the fall of 2017, about nine million of this is going to be issued to begin implementation of the energy efficiency projects we've talked about at length over the last couple of years, and just recently approved by the City Commission for making improvements to our parking garage lighting, our city hall, heating and cooling, and beginning the installation of new remote read utility meters that will increase our operational efficiency and save labor costs. And again, a portion, perhaps a million dollars, of that new $10 million bond issue this fall will be used to expand water service lines leading to the industrial park, that is very important to attracting and retaining industry. The bond proceeds or a portion of them will also be utilized to make water systems further down the road to improve service and water reserves to Perriville. If the city receives this Economic Development Assistant Grant that is currently pending, water system improvements will likely begin in the fall of 2017. Implementation of the energy improvements will begin following the bond issue in the fall, and they'll be partially implemented in this next fiscal year and be intended to be concluded in the fiscal year of 2018, 19. So, we've got a pretty long process ahead of us, the next, really, two fiscal years to complete all our energy improvement projects. Our general fund capital improvements in the recommended budget are listed on page 15, and a brief summary of the major highlights are, again, and I hope I'm not too repetitive here, but our fire facility study of the main fire station on number one is now underway by Brevura. $1,250,000 is allocated for the study and partial renovation of this fire station number one. We'll obviously know more regarding the recommended project scope and projected cost as the study is completed, probably in August of this year. As mentioned earlier, if new construction is recommended, total project cost could well be six million or more. Additional revenue will be required to be in hand in 2018 to begin construction on that renovation or new construction of the fire station number one. In addition to front-ending some of the initial construction cost, new revenue will be needed to repay the cost of a probable $15 million or more bond issue recommended, as preliminarily as it may be, for the 2018 fiscal year to finance fire station number one construction cost, again, to start this year, to be completed in the following fiscal year, with bond proceeds also be used to acquire our long-needed new ladder truck that will cost 1.5 or 1.6 million or some large number that I believe is approaching 25, 26, or 27 years' age. It has repairs made, we just made some repairs to it, but it needs and must be replaced in order to, in order for the city to maintain its current excellent ISL fire insurance rating, and as a matter of safety, to provide fire protection services and rescue services to Center College and our hospital and other larger structures. And also, a portion of this probable $15 million bond issue would likely be planned for use in construction of facilities that will likely be included in the recommendations of the Master Park Facilities Planning Study, and probably, most likely, some sort of facility, pool or recreational facility, with need and size of that to be determined. I'll mention again briefly the energy improvement projects, the cost for the city's electrical usage is currently very high, we spend well over $1 million annually to keep the lights on and do the pumping, primarily because we are still using outdated, energy inefficient, older equipment. As we know, state law provides for third-party contracting whereby the city's cost of making capital improvements can be recovered over time as energy efficiency savings are achieved, and we entered into a contract where we have a guarantee that we will actually save money over time by taking these steps. Total of $1,146,000 is allocated in general capital improvement section for initiating these energy improvement projects in the next fiscal year, which again will not be completed until the following fiscal year. I'll mention fleet management, again, at our recent City Commission meeting, we recommended also, it was kind of an outgrowth of this energy efficiency study, that instead of the city buying passenger vehicles every year, as we have done traditionally, if money was available, that instead we lease all of those vehicles in the future. We recognized from doing the pro forma of that study that we can save $48,077 annually, or over the lifetime of, I think, about 10 years, perhaps $570,174, depending on the actual composition of the mix of those vehicles and what equipment we may incur the cost of adding there. So, the benefits of that are significant, in addition to lower annual operating costs, other benefits of using the new vehicles, which we probably will rotate on a three-year basis, will be improved reliability, improved fuel usage and cost savings there, scheduled maintenance costs are included, and it is a good boost to our public image and also to employee morale. So, the other final thing I'll talk about, capital improvements generally, and we've talked about the TAP grant, one we've received, one that's pending for the improvement of Main Street, which will be a big shot in the arm for our downtown merchants as that is completed, that's going to require for both ends of the street, if we get the approval of the second TAP grant project from Second to Fourth Street on Main, $484,250 in next year's recommended budget. And also, going further around the corner there, on Second Street and down to the bridge, it's going to cost us $200,000 to replace that with a safer and newer bridge. So, I mean, when you think of this year and next, and they kind of can't be completed overnight, we're talking about a minimum probably of $25 million in capital needs. I think that's pretty clear, and I haven't mentioned, and there's other needs that we talked about in our retreat, for the need to, at some point, complete a master study of our sewer treatment plant, and as we did in water plant modeling, determine what size and improvements need to be made there to be consistent that current sewer treatment plant is near the end of its operational life, and that will be a future project. Those costs of the sewer improvements will likely be borne out by the sewer user fees. We have a study underway now, and sometime in the near future, you will be receiving the results of that study with regard to what adjustments might be required in the existing sewer rates to meet our bond covenants that have to be met under the terms of those bonds that we issued to pay for that, is also, in order for us to sign off on any new bonds that we are planning to issue, we have to certify, or Michelle does, that we have met all covenants of all existing bonds. I say this, of course, the sewer's a future thing, but in terms of our existing debt for the next fiscal year alone, we are now at an annual debt payment of $975,569, $975,569 in debt payments. Those are listed on page 14, that cover the debt on the construction of this new city hall building, our public works building acquisition, previously purchased fire truck that is probably about 20 years old now, and the final payment on our local police-fire closed pension system that was, funding was initiated for that back in the late '70s, I believe, when the state mandated the closure of local pension systems and required cities to participate in state-run statewide pension system. So, our existing debt has become a larger portion of our annual budget, and debt must always be paid first. In all reality, to meet our near-term future interests, as discussed above, the city will be required to borrow and repay additional funds with interest, which means additional revenue will be required. Now, at some point in the future, the alternative to not receiving additional revenue, the lines are going to cross at some point, if we don't have additional revenue, the only alternative is to reduce staff, reduce current services, reduce funding for community agencies and joint partnership efforts, and the avoidance of incurring additional service costs or contracting with the private parties to provide those at a lower cost. We're a long way from reaching our debt limit, and we have an excellent bond rating, that's still the path recommended and the best path for us to solve and meet the need, solve our problems immediately and to plan to meet future needs, but we are going to need new revenue in order to go down that path. So, on page nine of the memo, I talk about the great need for additional revenue, recommended action by the City Commission. I mentioned the fact that we've had a policy self-imposed as good stewards to avoid surprises, that we maintain in our general fund budget, 20% as a reserve, 20% of our operational expenses plus the cost to make a debt service payments. That 20% reserve doesn't include any particular reserve for the other funds that we operate that don't have reserves, such as our solid waste, which we make transfers every year in some amount, maybe around $50,000 now, for example, our municipal parking garage, which I think, Michelle, equates to maybe $100,000 a year or so, it's over $100,000 in round terms. You know, some of the other enterprises that we operate that needed a little additional money, the museum fund, cemetery funds, and so forth. So, a 20% reserve isn't a overly conservative reserve, but we've been fortunate to maintain that, and that's great. The recommended budget, general fund budget summary on page two of your budget detail, after including the increased revenues recommended later in this memo, projects an ending target reserve at our 20% level for the next fiscal year of only $2,658,163, $2,658,163, to be reserved for what we would consider to be true emergencies, and you might think of ice storm, or tornado, or flood, or those type of things. Taken from the projected total ending fund balance for next year, $3,654,858, which means the general fund has, if you will, an operational margin of error or wiggle room, if you want to call that, of, I'll say only, it seems like a large amount, but only $996,695. This amount may seem like a large amount to the average citizen, but in perspective, the average pay-the-bill list of the city each month is over a million dollars. So, doing the things that are recommended and seeking the revenue that is recommended gives us, with essentially, kind of the same path forward, it's not an excessive reserve, but it is a reserve. We've talked in our creative thoughts with RKG and our economic development partnership about the good idea, which it is, for the city and county, I'm not speaking for the county, but for us to review, really, our financial policies, our reserving policies, the potential for granting local economic development incentives in order to accomplish the priorities of economic development, and also for the city to revisit itself in terms of what's prudent. So, we're going to begin that process, and I think it's an overdue process for us to think about, but we must increase revenues, we have, in my opinion, almost- We have, in my opinion, almost no ability to grant incentives at the present time, given how close things are run, in terms of lack of surplus, basically. So, let's talk about our opportunities for raising revenue, and I won't belabor the point in interest of time, but just simply to say that city governments and counties are not much different. We have very limited ways to raise revenue. Accordingly, and I have looked at all options, open to us as well as the path most utilized by other cities, it is recommended the city of Danville take action in the very near future to raise both its occupational license tax and its net profits tax, each by the amount of one-half of one percent. This would then result in the city having an occupational tax rate of two-point-zero percent for the employee wage withholdings, and one-point-seven percent for business net profit taxes. The total effect of these tax increases, depending on when we, when it's enacted, and if we do it soon, we could get it effective October one. If we don't do it soon, it won't become effective until January one, given the delay in notification that's required. But if we do that, we will generate for the next fiscal year, in this first year, one-point-nine million in additional city revenue, which would be utilized as indicated in this recommended budget. We need to take action as soon as possible in order not to lose the year. So, as I've noted several times in, in going through this memo, additional revenue is, is very much needed to provide the services outlined in this preliminary budget for the next fiscal year, and to generate some funds to meet our city's future needs. So, in summary, of the cumulative new revenue needs identified, and the amounts of revenue to be received under this proposal, the additional revenue from occupational net profits tax for the next fiscal year, one million, nine, nine hundred thousand. New items recommended to be funded in this preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen, is one million, five hundred and forty-one, seven hundred and fifty-thousand, giving a balance from that new revenue of only three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I would say our city's revenue growth in recent years has been more stable, and with some growth, but less growth than desired, and each successive year of our recent city operations has produced an ever smaller operational surplus at the end of each fiscal year, and that's pretty clear if you look at the general fund summary on page two. If the action is taken, that I have recommended, that we increase payroll and net profits tax, the city's projected total fund balance at the end of fiscal year, the next fiscal year, fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. Well, I'm sorry, I'm misstating this. The, the current projected total fund balance at the end of... Okay, let me just, this was done, as I said, about five minutes before we came in here. Our projected total fund balance for the end of this year, let me do it this way, because this is more understandable. For the end of this year, June thirtieth, our total fund balance is projected to be seven million, forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. If we take the financial steps that I have recommended, we will have, at the end of next year, a total projected fund balance of three million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight, which even given the increased revenue, is still three million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three less than the amount that we're expecting to end this fiscal year with. So, I mean, for a number of years, we've been using our surplus. We've got new projects that are, that are needed and recommended, but we've got to have some new revenue to do that. Now, of course, in this next fiscal year, as the rate increase is recommended, won't be effective until the third quarter, we won't get a full year's benefit, and so the next fiscal year would return us to a much stronger ending balance position if we don't find other needs to spend that additional revenue regarding. So, to me, it's, it's pretty clear that if approval is given for raising the occupational net profits tax as recommended, the proposed budget is within the city's current financial means, and it is a balanced budget in terms of resources and appropriation. If that approval is not given, it will be necessary to reconsider the recommended budget and scale back or eliminate many of the spending recommendations made in this budget proposal. As recommended, the city's two thousand and eighteen, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget has total resources of fifty million, four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six, total appropriations of forty-five million, six eighty-eight, nine thirty-five, and total reserves of four million, seven hundred and fifty-one, two hundred, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Now, we normally review a ten-year projected capital budget, and that is attached in this document, as I said, as began the discussion. For the next fiscal year, our projected expenditures for capital items are fifteen million, three hundred and forty dollars and four cents. And we can take a moment, if we want to, and look over that again. But before we do that, let me just mention also our utility fund summary. We will have made a major milestone in this community as we complete our water treatment plant improvement projects, and that's expected to be done June or July. I'll say we'll probably try for dedication of that in August of this year, to coincide with the Congress congressional recess, so we can get some of our federal folks to also attend. We, as part of our overall project in getting that granted loan, we included in that the other water line improvements that we're also trying to make, and those are to the Duster Foundation at DePereville, and if we get that EDA grant, we'll continue on with that in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. And the other big thing, and it truly is a big thing, is the inception of our energy efficiency improvements to our water utilities. Essentially, the remote read readers, which will enable customers to come out here to see in real term if they're having water issue problems or not, it probably will permit us at some point in time to, to do more timely billings rather than a two-month cycle. It'd be an enhanced service and save us money in, in so doing. I've mentioned that the bond covenants require us to do a serial rate study, that's underway, and you'll probably get the results of that study before the end of this fiscal year. We would anticipate that some adjustment will be recommended because it's been many years since we've had a sewer rate adjustment. So, from my perspective, and I, I have known cities in my working career with my rather long service at Lake of Cities, I've traveled about extensively, I think Danville is different than a lot of smaller cities in that we provide a lot of services, more similar to much larger communities, particularly in our water regional approach. And so, we're changing, we have changing needs, we've got to recognize those and prepare for those, and respectfully, I think this is the best way to go about trying to meet those needs on behalf of the city and its citizen. I'm happy to review the capital or any other items that you may wish to review in more detail, but that's, that is, in essence, the, the overview of the recommended, recommended
Ask the commission if you would, like to begin to ask some questions without getting down into the great detail, maybe some broader questions you want to address? Or, we can leave it at that, deliberate on it individually? Set time with our city manager to discuss individually? What's your pleasure?
I just had a couple of general questions.
Anybody got any objections to that?
No.
Fire away.
Going back to the certified local government, we're, we were certified local government prior to Dr. Rogers.
We were.
And that was because the director of Heart of Danville has always been certified?
Well, the agreement states that the responsibility for meeting the staffing requirements to provide the services contemplated or specified by the certified local government agreement rests with the city. Now, I'm thinking back to two thousand, the history of our working with, I think, the Heart of Danville has been where certain services have been performed on either side of the street in several of those years. At one time, we may have provided more services regarding the Architectural Heritage Board, given Julie Wagner's, I think, qualifications when she was there, those kind of shifted back to her. When she left, at the request of the then-current chair of the Heart of Danville, who made the point, and I can see the validity of the point, it's very difficult for the Heart to both promote business enterprise and also regulate them, and they asked if the city would take back the Architectural Review Board duties, and we did, but we still had staff that met the technical requirements on the Heart of Danville board even when we did that. And Julie, after she left, Bethany Rogers had those requirements, they're basically requirements of degrees in either architecture, or history, or archaeology, and those type of things, but as a functional matter, it, it, it sort of became clear to me as time passed that it was difficult for the Heart, as the former chair of the Heart of Danville said, to do both. And they felt that if we could do it, it should do it, and I agree. Now, the difficulty in doing that is that our coach director has been overloaded on a lot of areas. She willingly accepted this and has done a great job, but she has said herself to me many times that she doesn't really have the, the required professional degree in that area of specialty, and, you know, we still sort of relied on Bethany to kind of help shoulder that. But as the delineation of services became a little clearer, it also became clearer that the state expected us to fulfill them, one way or another, and so, by workload, by sort of functional specialty, and just need to, to, to perform the service, I think it's time that we now do that, and would also relieve Bridget from a very time-consuming duty and focus on other areas as well. I don't know if that answers your question in general.
It does, and what happens if we don't?
We would be in violation of the agreement. We would probably forfeit any future grants that might be available. We're in the, we are recipient currently of a grant to upgrade our guidelines in our historic district, so it would not, I think, jeopardize the existing grant, but it would bar us from getting any future grants. And I, I think you attended the, the recent presentation, and, and, and the Kentucky Heritage Council represented, did a great job in terms of explaining all of the things that is contemplated, and the reasons for doing these services, and the fact also that the Heart of Danville scope is limited to downtown. The certified local agreement requires that these services be done on a broader path, so that historic preservation, nominations, surveys, work of that nature, isn't limited to a very small footprint, but rather the entire city, and we've talked about our concern about losing some of our historic elements in a wider arc.
What's the amount of the, sorry, what's the amount of the employee increase? I'm sure it's in here, but can you just...
It's one, let's see, it's a total of three, one percent...
Cost of living.
And two percent merit.
Do we have a dollar amount on that?
Yeah, hold on a second.
Okay, I see you looking.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
And while she's looking, just, just for the general public, you said that we, we just did this five, five minutes ago. I think what you meant to say is we just wrapped this up five minutes ago.
What I meant to say was our staff, myself, were at the table putting the final memo together to coincide with budget numbers, and we only completed that very shortly prior to us being called to order.
But this process has been how many weeks in the making?
It's been, I would submit, since we started talking in January, February, as in terms of...
December.
Just want everyone to understand what goes into it.
It's ongoing, right?
What was the number?
Must be a big one.
While she's looking, Kevin, you want to, you have a question that can be...
All right.
Is that okay?
Do you have the number? Go ahead, whenever, if you've got, go ahead.
The tot, the total number for the wage increase, the additional taxes, and the additional retirement was two oh three, around two hundred, three thousand dollars. That's if we're fully staffed, and they get, everybody gets a raise, so it'll be less than that, because we're not fully staffed.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, my question had to do with, well, several things, but it's most glaring, I guess, in the emergency medical dispatch summary you gave, that it looks like it's going to cost three hundred and forty-five thousand, and not only is it your feeling that the county won't participate in that, but they also may cut their current funding that they share with us by forty-five thousand, is that...
Yes.
Okay. Currently, we're, this next fiscal year, we're going to have to upgrade our CAD system, which that does come from the funds that they hold in the reserve. That's going to be well over a half a million dollars in order to do that. And, and so, they decided that in the nine-one-one funds that they do hold, the nine-one-one funds, that in order to make that fund whole, they needed to reduce their ninety thousand that they usually give us out of that for wages to forty-five thousand, so that's a reduction of forty-five thousand dollars that we get normally from the nine-one-one funds. So, we're going to get less money.
Of our funds that they are holding?
Yes.
Of our money that they are holding?
Yes.
They're going to dole it out. I have a serious problem with that. And also, think that the emergency medical dispatch is a wonderful idea and a life-saving idea, and I would like to do it, but I don't think that we should have to foot the whole bill. I mean, I guess, if we do, we do, but that's, that's just not a good policy.
So, if they're reducing our money that they're holding by forty-five thousand dollars, where's that other forty-five thousand dollars going?
It goes, it's in our budget, it's in our general fund budget that we receive from them. Normally, we budget on that line item, if you'll look on page three.
Let me suggest, Michelle, that you also just talk about the total funding of the nine-one-one center, as it presently exists, and the revenues from the county and the city, and any other parties that go into that.
Yes, I'll do that. It, it's line number ten dash zero zero dash zero zero four seven six one, or not, four seven eight oh, I'm sorry, that's the cost share for the nine-one-one center. And if you'll see, in the past fiscal years, we've been getting, we've been getting ninety thousand dollars each year, and this year, we're only budgeted to get forty-five in going forward. So, there's where the reduction happens. It's not an expense, it's a reduction of revenue that we show on ours. They, their reason for saying that is because they're paying for the, how they have to allocate the funds between nine-one, between cellular and landline funds, that they cannot make their fund whole and pay for the whole CAD system. And so, that's the decision they made, and that was, that was in, what was in their preliminary budget that they had on Tuesday. Also in their preliminary budget, even though that they recognize that the funding is not equal at this point in time, and that we do have additional costs if we do the emergency dispatch, they kept in their budget the hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that they currently give us, which is online's four-five-six-two. Then that comes out of their general fund budget in order to help fund the nine-one-one center. We also received from Parable, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and from Junction, six, from Parable, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and from Junction City, six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to help fund the nine-one-one center. The rest of the nine-one-one center, which is over a million dollars this fiscal year, in this fiscal year's budget, if we do the emergency dispatch... fiscal year's budget, if we do the emergency dispatch, so we pay the rest of that.
Sounds to me like if the citizens want emergency dispatch, they need to go talk to the county, county fiscal court. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's equitable at all for us to shoulder the whole thing.
I would agree.
Last time you gave us a report about the 911 money that's been held in escrow? What's that balance now?
It was seven, it's around $700,000. They're going to spend $500,000 of it on the CAD system this year, which leaves a balance of $200,000. But it is, and the balance of $200,000 of how they've been allocating the money is on landline and not cellular. And that's going to need to be researched of how that proportion out, comes out. I don't know how it's been proportioned in prior years.
I think she's attempting to say that the county believes that there is an administrative restriction they have in terms of, out of each of those landlines and cellular fund receipts, they've got to be spent in proportion to the revenues or the call activity, and so they're saying there's some technical reason they cannot make that $45,000 expenditure to us. I'm not sure exactly the logic of that, or the accuracy of that, that's the current.
That was kind of my question, is where's the other $45,000 going? Because if there's 90 there, or if they've been giving 90, and now they're only going to give 45, are they still going to continue to hold that $45,000?
Well, they're, they're going to be holding $200,000 in their budget. As their budget was presented Tuesday, it'll, they'll have over $200,000 in the fund reserve if that $200,000 is only in the landline. And that's what I'm saying, is if they are proportionated out, and we do not know how that's been done in the past, and we would have to research of how that money actually could be spent with not having the.
But they're, but they're all funds earmarked for 911 centers?
Absolutely. They're only going to be spent on 911 center, yes.
Regardless of what they think about the proportion, it's all earmarked for 911, and it's been set and accumulating for how many years now? And not to, well, I guess I am, but these are the same guys who just issued a report card about somebody else, right? Right? They're talking about partnerships. They issued a report card, right?
Ron, what's, what's, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but I know there's been some discussions about the movement of those funds to us.
Seemingly, the county is receptive, and more so than in my experience, any time in the prior five years, to the idea of entering into an interlocal agreement to specify these matters, come about operational matters, funding matters, and so forth. And I think that's a great idea, because if you're operating in our city and county a service of over a million dollars, and it's sort of based upon somebody's understanding that may change from time to time, that's not the most professional way of funding or operating a system. So, I think, I commend the county judge for being now willing to enter into that. I think personally, I personally think that he is willing to make the transfer of funds over to us. I think the technical issue raised is what's in temporarily, or as it turns out, maybe longer, preventing some of that transfer of the 45 or the other funds. You know, I don't think he's unwilling to, but I think the county, like the city, has, is faced with decreasing reserves, and keeping money is one way to keep your reserve. So, I don't know if there's a second motivation there or not, but I'll just say that, you know, from my point of view, the county judge particularly, and Mary too, have been very receptive to meeting and letting us begin the discussions about how we can have an effective interlocal agreement. The money issue is, I think, temporary, more than long-term. The bigger challenge is, you know, I think the county actually, in a way, can be commended by the fact that they have, through diligence over time, put away money for capital improvements that is now needed, and that's over half a million dollars. And they're willing to write that check, and that will be done towards the end of this fall or December. And so, we're going to improve equipment, we're going to get usage of that fund that's been accumulating there for a long time. So, I commend them for that. And the bigger question is not necessarily just the reallocation of those funds from the cellular taxes that the state sends down, which I do agree and believe should go to the city and not to the county, because we believe under law, it's got to be, got to be sent to the public service answer point, and under law, that's required to be supervised by the police department, which we do. So, we think we're the point, rather than the county that should receive them. But maybe they can receive them and send them over to us fairly quickly thereafter, and maybe we'll get all that worked out. But the bigger challenge is just having enough money to operate the system. And, you know, the $138,000 that the county may contribute, and the 90 here, I mean, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars currently, and it won't go down in the future if we're going to continue to provide their service. So, that's the big challenge.
Given that, what are, is it still an issue of how the, the monies, or what we're using to divide the money, or how we're determining who pays what based on call volume? Is that still the issue?
We changed it from call volume now. We've been running our numbers now based on population. That way, we don't have to worry about call volumes changing, it going up and down, or he said, she said. It goes by, we decided to go by population.
These are premature conclusions, but they are indicative of efforts of discussion that we're trying to say what is a fair way of shouldering the respective share of the total cost. And I'm more optimistic than I've ever been, and maybe I'm not wildly optimistic now, but I'm more optimistic that we'll be able to satisfactorily resolve this issue in the coming few months.
That would be great.
So, let me understand this now.
Ron's so much more politically correct than we are.
The money's coming for 911 services, and they're the agent that's holding the money for the last X number of years. They give us back out of that money, a portion, the 90,000 plus the 137?
No, the 137 comes from their general fund. It does not come from the E911 fund.
So, then the 90,000 is coming from that pot. So, really, it's for the whole shebang of operating a 911 service in this county, city included. They've been paying $137. They finally got you $137.
Right. They were at 37, they were at $37, $35,000 until a few years ago, and now they're at $137,000.
And that's no facilities, no personnel, no benefits, no nothing, right? Who's paying all that stuff?
That comes out of the budget in.
You didn't say it out of the, who's paying all that stuff?
The city of Danville's budget.
Yeah, I think the community needs to know that.
To the tune of how much per year?
Well, if you'll look at your budget this year, because it's up to $300,000 for the four employees that Ron mentioned on page, on page nine of your budget. If you'll look at your three previous years, it ranges almost to $600,000, and then this fiscal, a little, $675,000 is what we estimate paying for this fiscal year, and then for the next fiscal year going forward, if we add the four employees, it'll be over a million dollars.
What line are you?
Line on, yeah.
On page nine, if you'll look at the totals at the bottom.
Oh, that's, this page is the 911 total?
This is your 911 center, what it would cost to operate that.
Okay.
Excluding cap, excluding capital.
I would also just mention that at our 911 center, the city makes available to the county that facility for emergency management meetings, as may be required, at no rental or other cost.
So, just so everyone's clear.
This current year?
This current year, we have budgeted $2.8 million and some change.
No, six.
No, are you on page nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on page eight.
That's far.
Six hundred and seventy.
Six seventy-six, seven oh two.
That's what we're estimating that we're going to spend by the end of the fiscal year. That's not a budget, that's the estimate.
Right. So, this is without, this is what we're actually going, probably close to what we're going to spend.
We'll receive ninety.
Which is $676,000.
We'll receive 90,000 from the E911 to help pay for that, and 137 from the county, $6,950 from Junction, and $695 from Parable. And the rest, the city pays out of the general fund budget.
And I can't count the 90,000, because that's coming straight from, the service has been used.
That comes from the E911 funds. Yes.
Which is whose money?
And I just wanted to also reiterate, how much money are they holding?
As I've written out, they have $700,000 in their reserve.
And they give us $137,000?
That's not, that, the reserve has nothing to do with the 137. That has to do with the 90,000.
Okay. And we have over a million dollars budgeted. If we, if we implement this emergency dispatch.
If you, if you don't do emergency dispatch, that number will go down by $300,000.
But it's still $700,000.
Yes, ma'am.
If, can, can we not dictate how we want that $700,000 spent? Instead of what they're saying they want to spend it on, can we say we want to spend it on implementing the EMD?
No, but they have agreed to pay, if somebody has to pay for the CAD system, we have to buy the CAD system now. It's come to the time that we have to buy it. It's time to buy the new CAD system.
That's something we have to do right now.
Yes, yes. With the new laws and regulations, it's time to do, we have to do the CAD system this year. So, that.
Right.
The CAD system is not in the $700,000?
No, it is not. It's a capital item, and it's in their budget, not our budget, because they're paying for it.
That's our investment, projected investment for next year, not, not the CAD system.
Right.
The CAD system's coming out of the funds that.
That's coming out of the $700,000.
Ron said they've been so graciously willing to hold on to.
Yeah, they've been so graciously willing to give us our money back to give us a new system. That's so nice.
Let's see if I can find other canned worms open.
I'd like to change up here a little bit. First, first of all, first of all, I'd like to compliment you all for what you did here. This really wrapped up a lot of things that we've been talking about, and I kind of wanted to see this happen, so I guess you're reading my mind. I appreciate that. And we do have an aggressive schedule in front of us. I do have a question. It kind of looks like to obtain what we have, you're highly recommended, because you said it more than once, for a pretty minor tax increase, but, but what kind of, what kind of, how many jobs that are paying occupational taxes would offset that increase? What are we faced with here in terms of creating jobs versus a tax increase? Do you have any idea?
Well, I don't know that I perhaps fully understand your question, but I will say, in terms of all the workers in Boil County, you know, about 40% of those are imported from other areas, so that may leave 60% of local workers that would bear that increased tax, and the others would be taxed based upon their willingness to travel to Danville and work and enjoy our amenities.
Which is the occupational tax, right?
Right.
So, it would take a certain number of folks to probably come close to equalling a tax increase for the workforce we have now. That would be a challenge, I guess, for our community.
Your point, if I understand it, Commissioner, is how many jobs would it take to generate the fees of the occupational license tax?
Of the half percent increase on occupational taxes, that's right.
It'd have to be based on some average salary for jobs.
That's true. It's probably a tough question.
You would have to generate $127 million worth of wages.
$127 million worth of wages?
However much anybody gets paid.
We thought it was a tough question, but the accountant, she was right on it, right?
So, I can't tell you how many people that is, but I can tell you how much wages they would have to make.
I think that's Mr. Atkins' salary, what I understand.
You know, right?
Well, I can tell you, my calculator won't do that.
Well, you might ask, our other communities doing this and have did it on this previously, and I would say the answer is yes and yes. You know, another community that we look to sometimes in terms of how they do things, Winchester, they have rates exactly in place as I'm recommending presently, and have for a number of years. So, this is not an unusual step. It's, given the revenue limitations, the options that are available to you, about the only option you have to generate that amount of money.
Doing a little math on the $127 million, if the average income, average salary was $50,000, that's $2,540 new jobs.
$2,540?
Just, just a few more hotels then, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Another question on the increases, it would be going, for one point, 1.75 to 2.0? And then the one that's 1.75, what is it currently? What are the current rates?
The current rates are 1.5 for occupational taxes, then it'd be going to 2.0, and the net profit is currently at 1.25, so it would be going to 1.75.
Okay, all right.
And the disparity in terms of total revenue collected from those two, it's probably about 80, 20%, with 80% coming from the occupational withholdings, maybe 20% of the total coming from net profits.
Yeah, the 1.9, 1.6 is coming from occupational, 300's coming from net profits.
And while we're opening cans of worms, what if the restaurant tax is passed at the state level, and what could that do for us?
Well, it could do many things for us in terms of giving us a future option we don't presently have, and it could create the opportunity for the city commission to consider rolling back this if you had another option to, to generate funds. The study by the Kentucky League of Cities, that I think I shared with you folks maybe six or nine months, or a year ago, or so forth, as I recall, if cities, if Danville were to have the authority to levy a restaurant tax at the rate of 3% on food sales, in $2,012, as I recall from memory, that would be about a million and one-half of revenue. So, that would obviously have to be inflated and adjusted for current sales figures, that type of thing, but that would give you the opportunity to consider the merits of that tax, which has many merits, including the restaurant owners would be exempt from the net profits tax if that tax were to be implemented under the way it was proposed by the General Assembly previously. And the food cost would be, of course, borne by tourism, and I mentioned earlier, I think that we have $85 million worth of tourism receipts, so a lot of people come and eat and enjoy our amenities here, and that'd be a way of taxing them, not us.
So, we could theoretically, if that tax were to pass, and if we implemented it on our level, we could even decrease this, these proposed increases on the occupational and payroll taxes?
Well, yeah, I think, I think the answer is yes, you could.
We could.
You could, if you get the authority. Now, I think.
Or not raise them again.
I think we all know that there's a lot of uncertainty with regard to the special session and the governor's call, and what authorities may be taken away, or additional ones given. There's a big lobbying effort statewide, and has been for a couple of years now, in terms of granting cities of all sizes. The restaurant tax authority, we're almost surrounded by cities that have it already, and we don't have it. Harrisburg being the closest example.
Lebanon has it also.
And there's some stipulation, though, it has to go to tourism, or?
Well, in the draft provision that's been maintained thus far, is that a minimum of, a minimum of 25% would go to tourism and convention centers for their promotion, and the remaining would be spent on economic development purposes broadly defined. Now, you could negotiate locally, more than 25% if you want to do that, but that's the language that's been used thus far.
That would certainly ease some pain on some of the things we're looking at here. For the consumer, restaurant tax is in, it's good for us as a city, and some people won't even recognize it, and it wouldn't help any, but for the overall bottom line of the bills, alcohol tax that we assess folks, can that be changed?
Our alcohol tax receipts have kind of leveled off in the last year or two and are not growing. There are restrictions as a result of legislation passed maybe last session, not the immediate one, but the year before, on cities' ability to increase that, you've got to. You've gotta basically demonstrate the need for, and it's pretty complicated. In terms of rolling it back, I think you can, but if you roll it back, it's like other things, you can never maybe move it forward again. So, that's a difficult thing to say, and as our sales revenue is kind of tapered to a flat line.
We've, we've hired five new officers since we've done the, the alcohol tax. We had, we had currently not hired officers that needed to be replaced during the recession, and didn't have the funds to replace them at that time. And then we, without, when the alcohol tax started to come on, we, we, they had additional duties, so we had to have additional officers, and so, we were able to do that. And as the additional duties come on for all the officers, because we don't have designated officers, but for all the officers related to alcohol events, we've been able to increase our staff three other times. So, we keep, we, we, we use that alcohol money in a lot more for the police in that regard.
Just to footnote, Commissioner, for the next fiscal year, the projected revenues from license fees for the alcohol, alcohol tax, it's the same as expiring. I mean, we expect no additional growth in terms of revenue.
And that's, that's less than the previous year, as it's coming in right now. That can always change, but...
I, I know you'll put a ton of work into this, and, and your opening comments were about looking forward and planning, and I remember talking to bond counsel about the concept of bonding more than the ten million in two thousand and eighteen, because even though ten million and one dollars above is taxed, is, is, has a little bit higher interest rate to it. But the theory was, the expenditures, the cost of those items was going to go, grow, go up at a disproportional rate to the interest rate of those bonds. So, I guess, Michelle, at some point, could you just kinda crunch some numbers and say, okay, if we, if we went beyond this and said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna expand our expenditures, and we're gonna do it with bonds at a little bit higher interest rate? Just like to see what that does.
We, we're already crunching those numbers. The problem lies now, what you, you were exactly right, what you said. The problem lies now is we can't get a bond rating, a good bond rating, without our, without having some preliminary work done. I can't say, we may or may not be able to pull, can I borrow ten million dollars? They won't give me a bond rating on that. We need to go forward with our energy project, because we told them we would, and they've already got that thing. So, if we do that, there's, we might borrow at the end of the fiscal year, and we can always amend the budget if we decide that, that our first one needs to be for the projects that we know what it's gonna cost, or we're gonna delay those projects, and they're gonna end up costing us more, and we won't be within our contract there.
So, you'd be fiscal year, possibly the end of two thousand and eighteen, correct?
Yes, we could possibly do it then, but it would, we could, and we could run the numbers to see if it would be better to do it then, but as far as borrowing it all up front, when we borrow for the energy efficiency, that would push that project too far back. We ran the numbers, because we just don't think that we'll get the bond rating that we need by, or, or even a good bond rating by saying, we think we're gonna do this with the money, because they're very specific what you have to do with the money when you get the bonds.
We might, and Mayor, I appreciate your point on that, because it, it, under some conditions, could, could be more effective dollar-wise to do it that way, but, you know, as we think about the sewer plant renovation coming down the road several years, in that, we, we probably want to not overissue bond sizes, because like the water plant, we, based upon our demographics, would get forgivable loans or grants to avoid that section of the, of the bond that, you know, that we wouldn't have to borrow. So, it, it needs to be right-sized for that, in particular, as you get credit and...
I think the main point is, you're getting the concept, you're looking at it.
We're, we're looking at it, yes. And we're already saying that we'll probably do that in the next bond thing, by him saying we're gonna borrow, probably need to borrow fifteen million, and not just ten.
Even though we came up with a needs list of fifty million.
Many of those future items are a little bit further down the road, so I didn't really bring those out immediately, but if we were looking three, four years down, they probably would be in there, and the total would be forty-five, fifty million.
Might be worth doing some projections there. Might not wanna see what we find, but... Is there anything else? We certainly have some homework in front of us.
Yeah, we got a lot, yeah, a lot to look at, yeah. Again, this is great, and I looked through back through the budget, is, are we just gonna do our own math, or are you going to forward to us what you are suggesting for the shared agencies and the...
They're in there, they're in there.
They're in there on page twelve, I think, or...
Page twelve?
You've, you've got an entire budget here.
It's complete.
You've got a complete, entire, balanced budget in front of you. That would be, you could pass tonight if you wanted to.
Page twelve under the preliminary budget?
Yes, it is, and...
I got it, yep. I couldn't find it in your glossary here, so...
No, page twelve, page twelve is your community agencies, and your shared agencies will be on page thirteen.
I just wanted to thank you all for, for doing this, because we basically sent you back to the drawing board, what, two weeks ago? And I know you've worked really hard, and I know it's hard to crunch these numbers, and, and I appreciate you being patient with us.
Thank you tonight for hearing us, and we look forward to talking with you.
Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.